Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, pursuant to public law nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Motion to move to the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First.
Yep.
Rotary Club Doggy Derby, request to use Jones Road, June 3rd.
The Rotary Club is holding their Doggy Derby event at the Jo— would like to at the Jones Road Soccer Field on June 3rd. I just need permission for them to go ahead and move forward with that.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lacy Soccer, request to post signs.
Lacy Soccer is having their registration for the spring upcoming season. They would like to put the twenty-four by twenty-four lawn signs throughout the community. It also gets posted on our electronic bulletin boards as well, so I just need approval for them to post their signs.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I do have one add-on here, and again, it is another posting of signs. As you all know, on February twenty-second, which of course none of us can attend, Relay for Life is having the kickoff at the Milpon School. They would like to put signs out in advance of their advent as well.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's all I have for this agenda. We can— motion to adjourn this agenda?
Motion to adjourn. Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can go right into—
Right into township, read the statement.
Right into township meeting. Statement. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Act, Meetings Act, pursuant to public law nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Sleet to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First, First Reading in Ordinance Twenty-Eighteen dash O-four, amending Chapter Three Thirty-Five zoning so as to be in compliance with the Pine Lands comprehensive management.
In order to attach at Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter Three Thirty-Five of the Township Code entitled zoning so as to delete the Rural Development Zone Three Thirty-Five dash Seventy-Two. Last year, we had made various changes to our zoning code, and upon the review by Pine Lands of those zones, we were still referencing the RD Zone, which the Pine Lands had eliminated many years ago, and we just did not delete it out of our code book. Mr. McDonald, make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Sixty-Six, amending the contract for the public— with the public defender.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Chris Cusores and Robert Ullaki of the firm of Dasty Murphy McGuckin, Ullaki Cusores and Connors as public defenders for the Township of Lacy. This is adding Mr. Ullaki as part of the public defender form and revamping the file fee for this services.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Abstain.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Sixty-Seven, accepting the retirement of an employee.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, accepting the retirement of a municipal employee. We have a mechanic retiring on April first, two thousand and eighteen from the Public Works Department. He has been with us twenty years.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Sixty-eight, authorizing the filling of a recycling tonnage grant application.
Resolution Township Lacy—
I'm sorry.
—County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the filing of a municipal recycling tonnage grant application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This is the twenty-seventeen grant application. It's always a year behind because it's based on the results of your prior year's tonnage.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Sixty-nine, authorizing the filing of a community development block grant application.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the filing of an application with the Ocean County Community Development Block Grant for various projects. And the Township of Lacy, we are even years with the county to receive funding for projects. We are looking for Lacy Township Housing Rehabilitation projects. We no longer qualify for road projects, our park projects, or those things because we no longer have a designated target neighborhood which qualifies. But we do qualify for low-income families that own homes where we can go in and do repairs to those homes, such as exterior doors, roofs, windows, upgrading heating systems, and those items like that. And what happens is the contractors are hired through us, it's paid through the grant. There is a mortgage put on the house for ten years and the amount of those services. As long as the individuals stay in the house and own the house for those ten years, then the mortgages are canceled. If they lose the home or sell the home, there's a prorated amount that goes back to the county of those improvements that are put in the houses. Last time we did them was nineteen— two thousand and seven. I just canceled a bunch of mortgages on those. You know, it's a very successful program. We'll probably only get about three or four homes done in this round because that's the only money that they give us. And those houses do then become part of our co-listing as qualifying units.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Seventy, authorizing compliance with civil rights with regard to the county CDPG program.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, agreeing to compliance of civil rights regulations in regard to the community development block grant funding projects. This is just a partner resolution with the prior resolution.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Seventy-one, authorizing the release of a performance bond for Cornerstone at Lacy.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for Cornerstone at Lacy Phase Two conditioned upon the posting of a maintenance guarantee.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Seventy-two, authorizing the transfer of appropriations.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a transfer of appropriations in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-nine. This is transfers from tax—to tax assessment from accumulated leave compensation in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars. The reason for this transfer is due to state—a couple of appeals at the state level. There was additional appraisals that needed to be done required by the judge at the state level, and this is just paying the bills, and there was not enough money in that line item.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Seventy-three, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a refund of deposit held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Resolution Twenty-Eighteen dash Seventy-four, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of nine million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
But abstain on—
Abstain on urgent care.
Thank you.
I was sleeping.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with noted abstentions zero-one, zero-two-one, and T zero-zero-three-five.
And Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
And Mayor Giuliano?
Yes. Monthly reports?
For the month of January, the Municipal Clerk's Office collected receipts—excuse me, that is not January. Oh, yes, it is. Five hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Move it. Oh, that's not—
Next is road opening permits were collected for the month— I just was shocked by the amount of money that we collected, but that was that one check from Exelon for January. Road opening permits for the month of January was five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, recycling commodity in the amount of five hundred and seventeen dollars. December for the municipal court was in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents. And the Department of Community Development for the month of January was sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Motion to accept the monthly reports for January?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
yearly reports?
Okay, those departments that have balanced out their year—year-end reports for road— for the month—for the Department of Public Works in the—road opening permits, recycling, clothing bins, and truck parking came to a total of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Municipal docs, receipts were collected for the year of two thousand and seventeen in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for—the year. That's all I have. Motion to accept those reports?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of January twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen.
Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of January twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen. Move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Winoka Harbor Fire Company for Ian Sacker?
Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve RAC license applications for the Rotary Club of Southern Ocean, Women's Club of Lacy, and the Knights of Columbus.
Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve bingo license amendment for the Knights of Columbus.
Move it. Second. All in favor?
I have two add-ons. Yes, I do. The first resolution is Resolution Two Eighteen Seventy-Six. It's a resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, acknowledging the identification of township-owned property for future listing on the recreation and open space inventory. This is a requirement from the Department of Environmental Protection with regards to our pending application for plan endorsement. If the town shall ever take properties—shall take green acres funding to purchase properties or do improvements to properties such as parklands, we then have to create what's known as a Rossi. So there's various properties that are outside developmental areas that we're adding to the list. It would be Block One-O-Two, Lot Five Point-O-Two, Block Eight Fifty-Nine, Lot Eleven, Block Eight Fifty-Nine, Lot Thirteen, Block Ten Twenty-Four, Lot Eighteen Point-O-Three, Block Sixteen Forty, Lot Three, Block Nineteen Hundred, Lot Two, Block Nineteen Hundred, Two Point-O-Two, Block Nineteen Hundred, Lot Three, Block Nineteen Hundred, Lot Sixteen. So these will be added to our Rossi in the future if we ever take public funds.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano. Next is Resolution Seventy-Seven. It's a resolution of Township Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Albert Serone as tax assessor for the Township of Lacy to fill the unexpired term of Mark Fitzpatrick.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
That's all I have to add on this evening.
Commence from the committee, Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, field with the sixty-five thousand dollar horse, pound horse, whatever it is. As you all know, last Friday, we woke up to the fact that our plant is going to close fourteen months early. And I mean, woke up to—I was sitting with a cup of coffee in my office, and they came across, and I was stunned by it. But all that means is that the plans that we have in place, we just have to expedite, and we do have some solid plans in place to help us with this. One is the Town Center, which we did some work on tonight. The other part is the New Jersey Natural Gas Pipe to go down behind the power plant so we can get something in there. We got some good news on that back in September, October, something like that, that the pipe that's already there can handle the flow for a new power plant back there. So, and New Jersey Natural Gas wants to sell that gas. So, they're working on it. So, while it all was a shock to all of us, the plans just have to be expedited, and that's all we—you know, it's all there is to it. There's not a whole lot more to it. It's gonna happen. I wish we'd been given more notice, but we weren't, and that's probably for some financial reasons. I just want—Lacy, Mr. Moss is out here, and I've got a big smile on our face, Mr. Moss, because Sunday night, the Eagles did it. So, it was a good victory for the Eagles, and I had planned on doing something, but with the power plant closing, I thought that I would turn it down. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Committee, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to talk about the power plant a little bit myself, because like Timmy said, it did come out of nowhere on Friday morning when we got the call. I know that the mayor got a call from Sue Diambrosio at that plant to kind of brief him on what was going on. I got a call early that morning from Jeannie Liggett, who is one of the executives out in Pennsylvania that we've dealt with many, many years. We've been dealing with Jeannie, and she's always been a very important resource to us to be able to get information. So we got two calls simultaneously, which kind of set us both back. And of course, Timmy was up at the gym a lot earlier, and he saw it in the Asbury Park Press, so he kind of let the bag out even earlier than that. But it was very unexpected. It was so unexpected that even the folks like Jeannie, the executives out at Exelon, were not aware of it until they made that decision Thursday night. They made a decision that they were gonna shut the plant down fourteen months early because of the fact that they're looking at doing the outage, which is supposed to be coming up in the fall. And financially, to do the outage versus—you know, versus shutting it down, it was more of a benefit to the plant to be able to just shut the plant down now in October of this year. So they—it was a business decision that made. They came down to and made, which, you know, certainly is something that we would not—prefer not to see so soon, but it is what it is. We have to pick up the pieces and move forward from here. Like Tim said, we—you know, we do have a lot of stuff in the pipeline that we're working on, trying to take and come up with ways to take and make sure that Lacy Township doesn't have any major hit moving forward. But there's a lot of—people in—we've come up and asked a lot of questions about the taxes, you know, tax rate, the taxes that we collect. And I just, you know, want to clarify for people so they understand, the township not only gets the taxes on the property itself down in the plant, which is about two-point-two million dollars a year that we get annually from the buildings, the land, and, you know, just like a normal taxpayer, we get a tax bill based on your land assessment and your building assessment. They get the same thing, and that comes in at about two-point-two million dollars a year, which will continue to come in no matter what unless they start taking and dismantling buildings. But the process itself is not something that even though it's gonna stop in October, is just gonna—they're gonna flip the light switch off and it's just gonna go away. The buildings, most of them are gonna be staying there during the decommissioning process. They've already told that there's a lot of other buildings that'll have to be put up in order to take and do the commission-decommissioning that they have to do. And this is something that would more than likely take probably a twenty-year period at the soonest to be able to go through and to take and—you know, shut it down and have the property cleared with the tower and everything else, you know, being shipped off-site. So it's not—you know, something's gonna happen overnight. It's not a situation where we're concerned that—you know, it's just the bottom's gonna fall in October, and we want people to be aware of that. The other side of the taxes, of course, is the energy tax that we get from the state of New Jersey, which would be the eleven million dollars that we get annually into the coffers in the township—in the township municipal budget, because that comes to the municipality and is not split between your regular tax bill, which would be your schools, your county, or the health, and the town itself. So that's part of the municipal budget that we get every year. But people—what people have to understand is the Township of Lacy is not the only entity that gets that money. Pretty much every township throughout the state of New Jersey gets a piece of the energy tax that comes out of Trenton, and it's based on—you know, not only Oyster Creek in our situation, but it's based on New Jersey Natural Gas, it's based on pipelines, it's based on electric lines. It's all formulated into a formula that comes—you know, from the state of New Jersey, and our portion happens to be eleven million dollars, which is higher than a lot of municipalities because of the fact that we are the host to the—to the power plant itself. So that money is—as far as—you know, we know, we've spoken to our legislators, we've spoken to people out in Trenton, is not in jeopardy in the immediate future because in order for that to be taken and reduced in any way whatsoever, they would have to take and go through the state legislature to take and change that. In all the years it's been in place, it was reduced at one point in time a number of years ago when we used to get fifteen million, and it was reduced down to eleven million at one point by the legislature. So the possibility exists that it could change, but at the same time, it's not gonna—you know, walk away entirely because just like every municipality, we do have other portions that come from the state. Our problem is we're trying to find out how much of that—that eleven million dollars is appropriated strictly to Oyster Creek, which years ago, we used to get ledger sheets on an annual basis from the state of New Jersey showing us what the dollars were. And for the last probably ten years, the state no longer sends out that little piece of paper. So we are trying to get that information, and we're gonna have Senator Connors' office try and do something for us to try and also dig into the nuts and bolts of it so we know what we're dealing with as we move forward. And, you know, Senator Connors and Assemblyman Rumpf and Gole certainly have more access out in Trenton than we do. So that's something that we—you know, we've turned—you know, the heat up on. We have to get that number because we want to know what that number is so we can take and do what's—you know, best for the community moving forward. I wrote down a bunch of notes because there's a lot of stuff I just wanted to touch on. As far as the plant itself goes, we were told when we spoke to—you know, the plant, both the mayor and myself, that all the jobs that are down there, there's a lot of people that work in the community, you know, that work down at Oyster Creek, and supposedly all those people down there are being promised that they'll have employment, whether it be in the state of New Jersey, they have connections with Atlantic City Electric, they have connection with PSENG, so they're trying to place people in New Jersey as much as they can. But some of those people would not be able to stay in New Jersey, and they certainly have plants out in Chicago and different areas throughout the country. So they—everyone that works there is being promised a job, but that's not the easiest thing when you're an employee, because, you know, if your family's here and your roots are here, you certainly don't want to just uproot your whole family and take and move to another part of the country. But, you know, we don't have control over that. We have no control of what the plant does during a—you know, corporation that makes decisions. But we're happy to hear that they're gonna try and do whatever they can to try and protect those people and make sure that their livelihood doesn't go away, you know, when they're—when they're put out of work. At the same token, the plant is still gonna employ quite a few people moving forward over the decommissioning process, but we don't know right now whether those people that are gonna work in decommissioning, although we know a lot of people have signed on that are Oyster Creek employees now to be working during decommissioning, whether or not they're gonna offer that to everybody or whether they're gonna take and subcontract some of that stuff out and bring people in from outside. So that's a question that we're trying to find out and try and do everything we can to try and help the—really, the employees of the plant, because they're—you know, majority of them are from Lacy Township. They're all people that are raising their families here and they have homes here, and we want to try and do whatever we can if we have any influence to get the information to—you know, be able to provide it to those people. So that's something we're working on right now. The other issue we've talked about many, many times up here and we're still working on it is to spend fuel. When Oyster Creek came to this town many, many years ago, there was never the agreement or intention on the municipality to take and have that become a spend fuel storage facility. Unfortunately, you know, Senator Reed, a number of years ago, decided that, you know, Yucca Mountain, where the American taxpayers have spent billions and billions of dollars building this—you know, storage facility, was no longer gonna be considered as a nuclear storage facility. So that kind of came off the table, and now most municipalities that have these facilities are all facing the same situation we are, not knowing whether or not that fuel is ever gonna be moved out of our municipality or whether it's gonna be stored here in perpetuity. So that's something that, based on the fact that it's here and that we believe it's gonna be here, at least for the lives of everybody in this room and probably well beyond that, we want to make sure that if that's gonna happen, that the municipality, our municipality as well as a lot of other municipalities, get compensation for that spent fuel, because, you know, that's something that every individual that pays their electric bill each month is a small portion of your electric bill that's actually still going to fund the construction of Yucca Mountain out in Nevada. It's never been stopped, even though Yucca Mountain has stopped, and if the consumers are paying that into their electric bill, certainly the municipalities that are hosting these facilities certainly should be entitled to a piece of that money. We've had conversations back and forth with Senator Booker, who's one of our state senators here in New Jersey, Congressman McArthur, and we're in the process of—we got a lot of answers to questions that we put out. You know, Mr. Booker was very, you know, good at responding to a lot of the questions, but there's still a lot of unknown questions when it comes to the—you know, compensation for the spend fuel storage. So we're in the process of—you know, Committee on Kennison and myself of setting up a meeting with Veronica to sit down with Senator Booker, McArthur, and, you know, Senator Connors to try and find out and get some more answers so that we can find out if we can't get the NRC to take and answer our questions when it comes to compensation, who do we have to go to? Who are we gonna have to sit down with in Washington to be able to take and make all this work? Other—you know, Mr. McDonald's been in touch with some legal firms that have done this kind of work before where they go out and if it comes down to it, then we have to file a class act suit with other municipalities throughout the country to try and pull together to be able to utilize, you know, everybody's situation to gain compensation. We're gonna do what we have to do. So there's a lot of things in the process, you know, that we're trying to do as far as that stuff goes. Moving beyond that, we've talked about it many times up here in the last year and a half, and Tim just talked—touched on the gas line, you know, being approved recently at the Pine Lands Commission to be able to take and utilize the gas line being installed by the New Jersey Natural Gas folks, which is gonna come through joint base into Manchester, to be able to utilize that line to get a line big enough down to Oyster Creek to be able to build a gas turbine plant. We've met with New Jersey Natural Gas and a few other entities, and there is a demand for it. We're just trying to get in touch with them now to set up another meeting now that this thing has kind of fallen through a little bit sooner so we can get things moving a little bit quicker than we had originally anticipated when it was a 2019 closing date. So we are working on that. That's a major component of trying to make sure that Lacey Township moves in, you know, many, many years into the future, having another ratable here in town. We know it's never going to create the amount of jobs that the Oyster Creek plant has created, but it's still going to be a revenue source for the township. It's going to be a revenue source for a lot of municipalities surrounding the township. But more so, it's going to create, you know, some jobs, it's going to, you know, bring the ability to, you know, get more gas. The gas companies are looking to expand into different areas. So it opens up a lot of doors if we can take and make this work. And the thing about the Oyster Creek site, the plant could, the new plant could be built behind the existing Oyster Creek plant. And it's an ideal site, according to the people we've spoken to, because the infrastructure is there. All the lines are there, the lines run through the Pines. It would be very difficult in today's day and age, not only the Pines, but very difficult to build any kind of infrastructure that you need to build these plants in any part of New Jersey. New Jersey is the most overregulated state in the country. And it would take years and years to get anything approved. Whereas here, we only, we have to have a plant, there's some upgrades to the lines, there's no doubt about that. But it's something that at least we could take and see become a reality in a lot less years than having to go out there and build a whole new set of infrastructure to be able to put the grid in place to tie into the existing grids that are out there. So we are working on that, and we're going to try and accelerate the timeframe on that. But the other thing we've talked about quite a few times up here, and I know somebody brought it up recently, was the fact that, you know, the town senate that we've been trying to work on, you know, for the last, what, 14, 16 months, I guess we've been at the state level, working on the town senate. Town senate, in my years up here, we've tried to do this a number of times. And this time around, when we got involved in it, we've been, we have Steve, myself, Veronica, Warren, we've had many meetings. And just so everyone knows, everybody's working on it behind the scenes, but in government, you can only have two people participate in every single meeting that we have, otherwise you're violating the sunshine law. So that's why there's two of us. But we all have involvement in the back of the scene. But the town senate, to us, is very, very critical. It's, you know, the town, it's never going to replace the power plants, no doubt about it. We have to take and put tools in place to be able to have development occur in this town, redevelopment occur is really what we're facing for the most part as we move forward down the road, so that we can get larger developers to come into town and build, you know, basically revenue sources that are, you know, going to produce more for us than a little strip mall, mom and pop strip mall up and down Route 9 and Lacey Road. So we've been going through this process. You know, some people say, well, you don't, you don't need, you know, another food store, you don't need another gas station. We can't dictate what people are going to build in this town. We, you know, they do their background, they go out and check whether or not they think they'll be successful, what they're going to be able to do. But my belief, and I think the coal committee's belief, has always been, your commercial base is going to be the best part of your tax, you know, revenue that you're going to ever get. And that's held true. We've got a great group of commercial businesses in this town, but we still have the ability to bring in more commercial businesses. And let me just say this, we're not looking to bring in more pizza bars, more nail salons. We don't want to duplicate. We want to bring in stuff that's going to give us jobs, we want to bring in stuff that's going to give us, you know, tax dollars and convenience for the residents. That's been the way we've been dealing with it all along. So the town senate is not a fix for losing the power plant. The commercial, your ratables we're looking to bring is not a fix. But if all these things together play a major role in any community in order to have the community move forward and be able to survive with the taxes the way they are in this state of New Jersey. So there's a lot of things going on. We are extremely approachable if anyone has questions. You know, we would really prefer to have people come to us here, call us, set up a meeting, we'll come out and talk to groups. Anybody that wants information, we'll talk to you. Because the worst thing you can do is start spreading rumors around the town, which has happened in the last couple of days. And you walk into, you know, somebody and it's like, you know, they think they're going to lose their home, they think they've lost everything. And that is not the situation we're looking at nor facing as we move forward. You know, we will do everything in our power to make sure that that doesn't occur. Could there be a tax increase? Yes, there could. I can't say there can't be. But it's not going to be a situation where anybody's tax bill doubles in any way whatsoever. If you look at your tax bill, you know, the municipal tax budget last year was, what, $28 million? You know, so $11 million out of that, you know, is basically, you know, what we get from the energy tax. But don't forget, folks, out of all the money that we collect in town, the municipality only gets 16% of your tax bill. So if you have a $5,000 tax bill, you can pretty much break it down. We're getting about $800 and something dollars of your tax bill to run the municipality the way we run it. And I'm not saying that other entities to get the money aren't doing a good job with their money, but we operate on a very small amount of the money that people pay. And we're going to continue to do everything that we have to do to tighten our belts, to make sure over the next couple of years, you know, we're not going to spend a lot of money, we're going to do what we have to do to survive and be able to run the government the way it should be run. But it's number one priority right now to get something else built down there and move forward the items I've talked about right, you know, here tonight. So again, if anyone has any questions, you can reach out to Veronica, make an appointment, come in. Any of us are available that you want to talk to, and we'll try and, you know, answer your questions and, you know, hopefully, you know, keep things moving forward. So, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm so long-winded.
Mr. McQuinn?
Thank you, Mayor. What Gary said, I haven't worked on. Just a couple. And Gary did take all the comments that, I would never say nearly as well as he did. But just a couple of things. We did, a couple of months ago, send a letter to Senator Booker, McArthur, and Menendez. And we did get a response from Senator Booker's office through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission to answer a number of our questions and concerns regarding the plant and regarding the storage. It's a very informed letter. I don't know if Veronica can make it available somehow. Veronica has possibly put it on the website. It was, it's from the NRC and it answers a lot of good questions. As Gary touched on, the plant endorsement, and in particular, the overregulation, it is a cumbersome process trying to go through our plant endorsement and get our town senate approval. The goalpost seems to always constantly be moving. As a matter of fact, tonight, we're, you know, they ask us to do something and we kind of rush it right out and do as fast as we can. The add-on tonight was for our town senate. So whenever they ask us to do something, we try and get it on the agenda as fast as possible and vote on it and move it along. And finally, we've begun our budget meetings and, you know, of course, with the power plant closing and we have all different backgrounds, we will still try to do our best to make the best use of the taxpayer's money. So that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee. Committee member Curtito?
Mayor, thank you so much. I want to echo some of the same sentiments as my colleagues tonight, and I really want to, you know, underscore some points. About a year ago, I had conducted an interview with the Asbury Park Press in this very room. It ran on the internet, it ran in print, and Committee McQuinn was a part of that interview. That interview was a few things. It was upbeat, it was positive, it was proactive, and most of all, it was honest. And that interview focused solely, and it really had a myopic focus, a laser focus on the plant. And what I said in that interview is a lot of things you heard here this evening with specific regard to a taxable value on the structures that are already there in place, a taxable value on the transmission lines, a decommissioning process that's going to take a great many years and require a basic staff of people there. In the rare and unlikely event that not another entity goes in there, you're going to have a reclamation process that's going to surpass the length of time for a decommissioning process. So I was a little bit disappointed, to say the least, when I opened the Asbury Park Press the other day, and the title of the newspaper said, "The End Is Near." And then inside the newspaper, there was another comment likening the plant to a '69 Chevy Nova in the age of a Tesla or a new wave electric vehicle of some sort. I understand that, you know, if it bleeds, it bleeds. I will continue to have a great relationship with the Asbury Park Press, and I've had a great relationship in the five years I've been up here. I was just disappointed in the way that was worded, because I think it did create some unnecessary consternation for our residents here in Lacey. That was unfortunate, and that's never the goal. So I think what you heard here tonight, as calmer heads are prevailing, is a multi-pronged approach I've set up here in public and private. There's a lot of academic capital up here, there's a lot of business acumen up here. Now, there's people working on different things, and we're not alone. The Board of Chosen Freeholders, you heard Congressman McArthur's name, you've heard Assemblyman Rump, possibly, the 3rd Congressional District. You have Senator Connors. There's a lot of people that are working on a lot of things here. So when we talk about things like decommissioning and possibly new ratables coming in and the good work that people on this board are doing, I, I'm going to reiterate the same message I had for the Asbury Park Press a year ago when I was mayor. I'm encouraged by it, I think it's a positive message. People that know me in town know I don't blow sunshine, I just tell it like it is. And that's what I'm doing here tonight. I think there's been a lot of work that has been done, and a lot by a lot of people. And I think there's still some work to do, but I'm definitely encouraged by it. I'm not afraid of the future. I believe in American exceptionalism. We put a guy on the moon 49 years ago, and I know that we're going to handle this. And this town is going to move on, it's going to move forward, and it's going to remain the gem in Ocean County like it's been since 1871. So with that, Mayor, I'll close my comments and hand to you.
Thank you, thank you. I thought maybe you wanted to touch on our dark program. We have the, tomorrow?
Tomorrow, there's a great tailgating. That's true. I didn't touch on it, I touched on it last, because I don't...
Remind some of the people out there.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah, tomorrow at the Ocean County Mall, I'm going to, part of the Intoxicated Driver Resource Center, which I head at the County Health Department, we have an outreach program at Center Court. I have about, I believe, seven high schools now going. We're going to have freeholders there, elected officials, people from the state. Mostly, we're going to have teachers. Of course, Lacey High School will be there, Lacey Police Department will be there. And what it is, it's a positive interaction between law enforcement, schools, young people. We are just hitting home and being proactive in our prevention. I would much rather have a prevention message than have to deal with a young person coming to my class on a Friday morning post-conviction. I'd rather prevent that conviction from occurring. I'm making a mistake of saying "I" because it's never just "I." There's a lot of people to thank all around the county. It will be a great and interactive program, free and open to the public. We encourage a lot of people to attend. I want to thank the Lacey School Board and the principal of the high school, as well as the police department. They've attended each and every year and brought a lot of students. Even the middle school had come one year and attended. So, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tomorrow? I apologize. 11:30 to 1:00 is the commemoration, Center Court, Ocean County Mall. Thank you.
It's 11:30?
11:30 to 1:00 PM, but we'll be there all day long.
I think everybody touched on, I wanted to thank the rest of the committee touching on the power plant issues. There's really nothing that we didn't know that Committee McQuinn, or Deputy Mayor McDonald, or any of the people set up here, we're going to be very diligent on, we're going to stay on top of it. I know we are, the five of us. So there's really much I'm not going to say about the power plant issue. I think we, like I said, said everything we needed to say. The town senate, I'm very happy that, I'm going to have a positive attitude that's going through, but we need some help from you out there, I do. I'm going to a couple of different business expos. I need the people out there, give us an idea of what you want to see in Lacey Township. Everybody does the same thing, and I'm not picking on businesses, pizzerias, this, that. Think of something different that'll attract people to this town for other reasons, to shop the other, you know, vendors in town. And that's what we're looking for, I think. And I think everybody up here agrees on that. I mean, we want to bring people from other towns, like, we go to other towns to solicit them. So that's what we're looking for here. I'm sure, Barry, you're going to talk tonight about the... I just recently also went to the Lacey EMS Insulation Dinner there again. I cannot believe the hours that these people, these volunteers put in. It was 30,000 hours?
Yeah, just that one.
Just the one, it was 30,000. That was in Oka Harbor. And I think the other one was 32,000 hours of volunteerism. Just think about something, I look at the business end of it, think about if we had to pay them to do it. It's well up over a half a million dollars or better. So when you see the volunteers, and we all know a lot of them, who they are, thank them, because they do an excellent job out there to, for the community. Municipal Alliance Lunch is February 23rd, Friday. Unfortunately, Barry, I know you're going to touch on that, but I'm not going to be able to make it because we have a township meeting that night. But all the good luck with it, and I know you do a great job there. Thank you very much. We're losing an employee to retirement, William Raider. I think he's, I've known him for, I only knew him as Billy every time I went back there. And I've known him for 20 years, he's worked back there. He was a very good, integral part of that team back there, handling all of our diesel trucks and keeping them running. I want to wish him luck in his retirement, very well deserved, he's worked very hard at it. Other than that, that's about all I have. Like I said, some people here have been touching on some other things. Dinners, we go out to a lot of dinners that I know. People have made remarks, ones I do go to are always for good things, and we get, I get a lot of knowledge out of it. So there've been remarks that we go to dinners, and that's what we do all the time. That's not true in any of our eyes. We go there for a reason, to represent and get knowledge. That's it. And I want to just wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day, and everybody enjoy, and thank you very much. Now, opening up to the public.
Regina sends a Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I just want to ask a couple of questions about the gross receipts tax. It's still holding at 11.2 million, I believe?
It's 11.1 and change.
11.1, okay. So then it's been rounded up to 11.2. How is that paid? Is that paid annually in one payment? Do you get it monthly?
No, no. What happens is, the energy tax receipts, the state will tell you it's kind of like state aid, but it's not. So what happens is, after we put in our best practices checklist, and depending on where you score, you can move some of that money. Lacey has never lost any of that money.
Okay.
And it is doled out, most of the time it's supposed to, well, it used to start in July, then June, then July, then August. And last year, we didn't get our first lump sum until September. And then it's like 5% here, 5% there, you know, we don't get it in lump sum.
So you get it in increments?
We get it in increments, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. It's not like I'm going to, yeah, and they keep pushing back the date as to when you receive it.
Okay, they monkey with a lot of money and...
They surely do, they surely do.
It's a common practice.
At one time, prior to the 90s, those ATR checks, they was called gross receipts and franchise taxes, used to come directly to the town from the utility companies themselves. So, for example, we had Brookdale Water Company in town for Pheasant Run, they used to send us a check. Verizon, New Jersey Natural Gas, and Oyster Creek, it used to come directly to the town until...
Now it comes through the state.
Trenton decided to steal the money, yes.
Interesting. Right, because that's going to be a tough number to make up. And even if it was cut in half because of the spent fuel rods, we know they still have to pay something.
Correct.
But at this time, there's no way of anticipating if that aid's going to be cut?
Well, no, there's been no talk about that aid being cut. And certainly, we're moving forward, trying to get answers from Trenton ourselves. But in reality, it would have to go before the state legislature. The governor just can't take and make a decision like that.
Right, good.
For the legislature to have to take a vote on it. And you have to keep in mind, it wouldn't just affect us. You know, as municipalities get further away from the plant, they get money, but not as much as we would get.
Like you were saying, it's across the board, it's not just us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's something that affects a major amount of municipalities across the state of New Jersey. So it's, you know...
All right, I was just wondering how that...
It's going to be our number one priority to protect.
Absolutely.
Regina, you brought up this spent fuel rods. Let me talk a little bit about that. I did talk to a law firm, class action law firm, that is actually handling, rejoined the class action lawsuit for opiate, opiate addiction. The same law firm. And in talking to them, the partner said to me, "This will be a very heavy lift." And there's no indication that the law firm that we've talked to is going to take the case. I did ask them, if they wouldn't take it, could they refer us to somebody that would? These spent fuel rods, this is not going to be an easy task by any stretch of any means.
There are other plants in the country with the same exact problem.
Well, again, you got to get them all together. You got to get them all together, and that's the whole thing, is getting them all together. And then you got to go sue the NRC, the federal government, to get this money.
That's big help.
Yeah, so it's going to be, it's going to be a heavy lift. So we'll wait and hear back from them.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Schorax, what is your name? You guys may know that I worked for a power company for some 36 years before retiring from Oyster Creek back in 2001. Stayed involved in the industry for about 15 years after that, before I finally retired. But I do know that after I moved here, when the power plant changed hands from Amergen, or to Amergen, they started talking about shutting the plant down and going to the soul. And at the time, there are neighbors to the north part of New Jersey were very influential in making sure that this plant got shut down. It was always on the news, shut down Oyster Creek, shut down Oyster Creek. And it seemed as though there was very little opposition from the town that would support it. There's another power plant, South Jersey, Salem, New York. And now they're facing the same kind of criteria, if they can't get enough money to keep it running, you know, everybody wants to shut down. My recommendation is that the town should make sure that those towns in South Jersey understand the impact that you're going to be seeing here as a result of this plant shutting down. So it's just a recommendation, and consider it. The other thing is spent fuel. The power plants throughout the country, all the nuclear power plants, since the first plant went into service, this one included, started paying federal government charge on the uranium that they burned, because the government owns the uranium plants, have and hold. So they pay the tax based on the uranium burning. When the plant stops paying, stops burning electricity, I'm not so sure what happens. I'm not up to date in terms of all these charges, but I doubt that they're paying this federal government the same amount of money that they were paying when they were burning that uranium, converting it. So it's just going to be a tough road to go to get any money out of that.
Yeah, well, you, actually, Bill, you know, we're going to reach out to you, because with your experience down at the plant, we wanted you to really take a look at the answers Senator Booker gave us.
I'll be grateful.
Because that's, you know, you can give us more of an insight as, you know, somebody that has the knowledge of nuclear. With regards to Salem, you know, we have had, you know, goings back and forth with them, and they're well aware of it. And their problem down there is nuclear energy is so expensive. Gas turbines are taking over the whole state everywhere you look, it's gas, because gas is so cheap. So they feel very, very threatened right now.
Yeah, entire nuclear energy needs support of the residents.
Big time, yeah, yeah.
Directly, it's a big time. And it's the federal government, and, you know, it's above, your local government, the state, the local government.
Well, that's it. The only positive that comes out of that with the more and more units that are going to be without, you know, like in our situation, that plant supports 600 units, where is all this energy going to come from unless they start building plants? That's why the old, the site behind Oyster Creek is very attractive to an entity to build a gas turbine plant, because they have everything in place and they know the community's going to welcome it. You know, this community has always been very welcoming of Oyster Creek, and we've had a great partnership.
Well, this town's always been complaining about the heat going into the bay too.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not going to change unless they put a cooling tower.
Right, but if you're building a new plant, the reality is, that's going to have to be done, you know, because, you know, at some point in time, you have to take and cross that bridge, you know, the Boney Bay, you know, has come back a lot, but, you know, again, you don't want to go in reverse now and have it go downhill.
Oyster Creek's 600 megawatts, right? So power plants are only about 30% efficient. So 30% of the heat of the, of the energy that that plant burns to make 600 megawatts, the same amount of heat's going to go into the water from a fossil plant.
Right.
Whereas what is, power plants are only, yeah, about 30% of the energy that they burn.
You were with Amergen when it first came in, weren't you?
Well, with JCP.
Exelon.
Okay.
It was before, it was Exelon, it was actually Pico Energy.
Yes.
At the same time, they were transferring ownership of Oyster Creek, they were merging with ComEd of Chicago, and it became Exelon.
Okay.
It was Pico Nuclear first, and became Exelon. And a transition, yeah, it was part of the asset purchase, I was project manager for purchasing the asset here. When we purchased the plant, one of the assets, in due diligence, one of the assets we looked at was, what can they do with the plant after it shuts down? At that time, we thought we had another 20 more years.
20 years, yeah, yeah.
And the answer was, can we use a, can we put a fossil plant there?
Right.
And the answer came back, no, because it wasn't sufficient gas line. And, you know, that helped, that actually helped Exelon to reduce the pay, the pay price that they purchased price for the power.
For the plant itself, yeah, yeah.
Because it was in all the negotiations. But the, so the other issue you look at is, look at all the environmental pushback you got for the gas line coming through.
Right.
So you're going to be fighting that battle.
Well, that's already gotten through that, but, you know, the Pines Commission has approved that now to come into Manchester through Joint Base, you know, a couple of months ago, that went through a vote, and that has been approved. That's why it makes the site attractive, and don't get me wrong, you know, it's a very hot issue running the gas line anywhere, there's no question about it, but you have to take and, you know, face the reality that you still have to be able to provide electricity for people to be able to live. So that's, that's really, you know, it's a fine line you have to try and balance and then get, you know, work with, but, you know, at this point, if it comes into Manchester, New Jersey Natural Gas is going to own the line, and they have made the commitment that they can provide the gas to that site to be able to build a big enough plant.
Who's offered the right plan?
That's, there's still been work on right now. They have a couple of partners that they're talking to and trying to, you know, get the study done so they can come back and sit down with us.
Anything I can do to help?
I'll give Veronica your address, you know, because I pass you house every night, and she'll send you those things, and maybe...
I think I have your email address.
Yes.